You just have to be aware of, you know, you kind of have to, even every day, you kind of have to keep in mind how much electric charge you have and stuff.
To sweeten the deal, L A D W P was offering plenty of rebates. There were rebates for buying or leasing used electric vehicles, rebates for installing a charging station at your home, and more.
It's a priority for us to be able to clean our air and fight climate change and get people into cleaner, cooler cars.
We have solar panels on our roof, so when we charge our car, we're charging with totally renewable green energy.
Well, most of us aren't quite there yet, but city leaders hope more people start thinking of a greener, more renewable energy future when they are due for their next car trade-in.
And here's another reason to go green: some of those electric vehicle rebates put hundreds of dollars back in your pocket. While he's one of the most outspoken members of the L A City Council, representing District 13, Councilmember Mitchell Farrell has a deep connection to his district, not only when he's at work, but also when he's off the clock. On our latest episode of Council Off the Clock, we find out what makes the council member tick.
So you got your start as a dancer, right?
I was a professional dancer when I was in my twenties, yes.
So professional dancer means?
I did touring shows, I did musicals, Broadway-style musicals.
Right. Okay, so with that said, we got kind of your background. Let's look at some music. If I grabbed like something randomly out of here, how do you perform it?
Well, let's grab this one. I haven't performed in this, but...
Do you know the songs?
It's a great, it's a great song. I know the song, all that jazz.
Right.
Yeah. "Come on, babe, we're gonna paint the town." And "all that jazz." But as far as performing in these, I certainly have not been in Hamilton.
Here we go.
I have been in Oklahoma.
You have?
I certainly have.
The one show I've seen on Broadway-
Yes, I did Oklahoma.
-was with Andrea Martin as the ant-
Wow.
-on Broadway.
That's really cool.
And I saw Oklahoma.
That's great.
So you come out here, and something has to change or switch in you to make you say, okay, I want to be a politician.
There was a transition from, I am tired of struggling in the arts, I'm struggling to make a living at times, to, I want to do something meaningful. How can I make improvements in the communities I represent? How can I improve the quality of life? And how can I support the organizations, the nonprofits, the various community groups, all of the folks who want to accomplish the same thing, and that is make our city better?
I know how much this place means to you. Can you talk a little bit about what it means to Hollywood and why you want to keep it around?
Amoeba is a brand that everyone supports and doesn't want to see go away.
Right.
So when this proposal came my way to close Amoeba and put a development here, that was not what Amoeba ever wanted. It's also a small business that employs dozens and dozens of people.
Absolutely.
And so it's a driver of the local economy, and it provides jobs for people who live nearby.
Well, that's interesting, too.
And that's exactly the kind of thing that I like.
I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. So I know you gotta get out of here, you're gonna run, but the last thing I'm gonna do before we go is I'm gonna buy you some Johnny Cash. I'm gonna do it right now.
No kidding?
I'm gonna buy you some Johnny Cash right now.
All right. I loved his last recording, and then his whole Ring of Fire with the Spanish trumpets, Mexican trumpets. My god. Is that the best or what?
And then when you think about it, that you think that June wrote that.
Phenomenal.
Movie nights over the summer months are a big hit in Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez's district, but you never saw one like this at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, where plenty of underwater thrills lurked.
The waters looked calm and peaceful enough, but then so did the waters at Amity Island until they weren't. Still, the setting at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center in Lakeview Terrace is the perfect backdrop for the first-ever Jaws movie night here.
I've been to a lot of movie nights, but never one in the pool. How cool is that?
We love Jaws. We're like big Jaws fans.
Yes.
We love sharks, so that's why we came, and this is awesome.
Oh my gosh, we are so excited to see Jaws. Seriously, watching Jaws from the water. Like, what could be more awesome?
Councilmember Monica Rodriguez and her staff run movie nights at various parks in her district, but this movie night is super special. There's even original movie signage, a giant Great White, a smaller mechanical shark to grapple with, and more.
You know, this pool is the largest municipal pool in the country, and we're, it's beautiful with a sandy beach. I wanted to create an environment where the community could come together and watch a movie like Jaws and recreate that environment from the movie.
Plus with all the kids, and then that lake over there, it's all a little bit suspicious.
Yep, you never know what lurks, but no one seems too bothered as they chow down on the free food and hot dogs, and of course, the pre-movie popcorn.
Do you think everybody should come to movie nights?
Yes, right. Everybody in the whole room!
Okay.
Then it's time to settle in, whether you pick the lounge chairs or the more suspicious pool water where things lurk, as Jaws bursts out of the water. Don't worry, it's just a movie.
Councilwoman Rodriguez held 11 movie nights over the summer. The City Council moves forward to ban animal fur in the city, traffic app Waze hopes to make your drive a bit easier, and a city swim program makes a huge splash. All these stories in City B. The Los Angeles City Council moved forward with a plan to become the largest city in America to ban the sale and manufacturing of nearly all fur products. Prior to the vote, Councilmember Bob Blumenfield and other animal welfare activists held a rally at City Hall in support of the fur ban. Councilman Paul Carretts said he hoped the proposal would lead to widespread bans around the globe. This motion, co-presented by Carretts and seconded by Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, would take effect two years after passage of the ordinance and would specifically prohibit the sale of products such as apparel made in whole or in part of fur, or any fashion accessory, such as handbags, shoes, hats, earmuffs, and jewelry.
The time for L A to step up has come. This is 2018, for god's sakes. The time is now.
Real-time traffic app Waze and the city of Los Angeles have teamed up to share information and help identify traffic conditions around L A to come up with long-term traffic solutions. Waze officials say there are 3 million active users in L A, which provides a wealth of traffic data across the city. Waze will also use data from the city to help keep users informed about current and upcoming road conditions.
I think everyone's striving for efficiency, and I think you can't be efficient without knowing the whole picture.
Mayor Eric Garcetti announced that Swim L A, an initiative to double the number of young people who receive swimming lessons at city pools, has already surpassed his goal of enrolling more than 36,000 Angelinos in classes this year. The mayor said Swim L A is a key engine in his drive to expand young people's access to low-cost sports and recreational programs. Garcetti launched Swim L A in June to help ensure that young Angelinos between the ages of four and 17 have more opportunities to learn how to swim. With support from partners, the program was able to grant thousands of scholarships to families who demonstrated financial need. To accommodate the additional lessons, the Department of Rec and Parks expanded hours at nearly 50 pools, adding more than 3,000 operating hours at pools across the city. There's nothing quite like home sweet home, and one exhibit on Alvera Street features what some Angelinos call home, or in this case, casa.
It's an art and photography show about people and the places they call home. If that home happens to be in East L A, that is, the exhibit, Landscapes and Land dwellers at the La Plaza de Cultura y Artes Museum, has a uniquely Mexican-American point of view. And home, apparently, can mean everything, from a tent, to a house, to the barrio, or a casita, even a cardboard home.
A lot of the photos are photos of my communities that I grew up in, so that's East Los Angeles, Boyle Heights, El Sereno, Highland Park.
This exhibition is really important to the city of Los Angeles, we believe, because it really talks about the relationship between L A's people, its land dwellers, and its places, its landscapes.
We've already had people come through and say, like, oh, I know that person, like, that's my friend, or that's my backyard. And so to be able to see yourself represented in such a visceral, realistic way on the walls of a museum is incredibly profound.
Artist Rafael Cardenas started clicking away in his neighborhood eight years ago, and he hasn't stopped. Meanwhile, he's taken up videography as well.
I kind of made my own road. I started shooting on my own. I'm not a studied artist. I self-taught, and I just grabbed a camera in 2010 and started taking pictures every single day of my life.
But the best thing about showing viewers both familiar and unfamiliar places, people, and experiences is just the human reactions the show inspires.
I've had people walk up to photos, and I wouldn't expect it, and sometimes they just cry. It's happened.
The show runs from now to March 25th of next year.
And the show is free. For more information, visit lapca.org. Jazz fills the air at a Latin Music Fest. Make sure you're ready if an emergency happens. And it's a party in downtown L A, but you'll have to bike or walk to get there. All this and this week's Things to Do. It's time again for the fifth annual Latin Jazz and Music Festival, and Sunday's lineup is all women. The annual event includes live music, food trucks, informational and vendor booths, and a beer and wine garden. The special emcee is Richard Montoya from Culture Clash. The fest takes place at Sycamore Grove Park on Saturday, September 29th, and Sunday, September 30th. Councilman Mitch Englander is proud to support the annual Valley Disaster Preparedness Fair. This is a free fun event appropriate for all ages, where you can learn the steps to take so you can have the peace of mind that you are prepared in the event of the unexpected. All exhibits, demonstrations, displays, speakers, special events are free, as is parking, admissions, lunch, and family emergency preparedness starter kits. Keep in mind, lunch and kits are only available to attending families that have registered beforehand while supplies last. Sign up today so you can be guaranteed a kit. The fair takes place Saturday, September 29th, from 9 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at Pacific Theater's parking lot, located at 9400 Shirley Avenue in Northridge. For more, visit ValleyDisasterFair.com. Siclavia is partnering with the L A Phil and Community Arts Resources and clearing the roadways between Walt Disney Concert Hall and Hollywood, transforming them into an auto-free zone where you can walk, run, skate, scoot, bike, and wander however you like. Six hubs along the route will feature art, food trucks, screen printing, kid-friendly fun, and dancing, as well as live music from L A's best musicians. Nearly 1,800 musicians, artists, and dancers will come together to perform at the festival's six hubs and along the eight-mile route itself. Think of it as an eight-mile free space saved just for you to do with it what you will. And that's not all. The evening ends with a free concert at the Hollywood Bowl, where Gustavo Dudamel will lead the Los Angeles Phil and welcome very special guests and more to the Bowl's stage. This Siclavia takes place Sunday, September 30th, from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L A This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, L A This Minute. We'll see you back here next week for more of L A This Week.
with Metrolink. All Metrolink trains are bike-friendly. Just remember to properly secure your bike. Take one of the six Metrolink lines to L A Union Station. Head west from the Metrolink terminal, and remember to walk your bike until you exit Union Station. Cross Alameda, and there you'll find Alvera Street, where you'll likely be greeted by traditional folk entertainment in the main plaza. Stop by the El Paso Inn for a rich atmosphere and a unique Mexican dining experience. Be sure to check out the Avala Adobe, which lies in the heart of Alvera Street. The Avala Adobe is the oldest standing residence in Los Angeles. The house was used as a townhouse and was donated to the city in the 1920s. Since then, it has been a museum for over 80 years. Be sure to lock up your bike at one of the city's many bike racks. Cross Main Street and head over to the Old Plaza Church, also known as La Placita. The church was founded in 1814 and is a California historical landmark. Right next door is La Plaza de Cultura y Artes. Their mission is to cultivate and celebrate the Mexican-American and Mexican culture in Los Angeles. The second floor recreates Main Street in the 1920s. With Metrolink, you can explore historic Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986.
Jump into a roll call and launch. We've got a very special presentation by Councilwoman Nuri Martinez. So if you want to lead this council meeting off today with a presentation, thank you so much.
Virginia, why don't you say...
Good morning, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, and please help me welcome this special group from here at City Hall, Mariachi Tesoro de San Fernando. When I say the valley has talent, this is what I'm talking about. These gifted musicians, along with their dedicated instructors, competed and won the California State Fair Inaugural Youth Mariachi Competition on Sunday, July 22nd. They competed against nine other teams to place first and take home $5,000 cash prize. This year, we have witnessed youth leaders making strides and demonstrating they too have a voice and deserve to be heard. The group in front of you is no exception because their talent knows no bounds. Mariachi Tesoro is part of a larger program that connects student musicians with experienced instructors. These students are discovering a sense of pride in their heritage and developing a positive self-identity. What better way to continue celebrating Latino Heritage Month than to recognize a group of students who are celebrating their culture through music? I'd like to welcome one of our masterminds, the masterminds behind the group, to say a few words. Here's someone who continues to serve his community by mentoring youth and dedicating countless hours to making sure students exceed their potential. Grammy of More winner, musical director Sergio Checo Alonso.
Good morning, honorable counsel. It's really a pleasure being here today. My name is Sergio Alonso, one of the instructors of the City of San Fernando Mariachi Master Apprentice Program, also a music teacher at San Fernando High School and member of Mariachi Los Camperos de Naticano. First and foremost, I want to introduce to you our program director, cultural arts supervisor from the City of San Fernando, Ms. Virginia Didik, who's over here to our left. But she should definitely be recognized. She truly is the mastermind behind this program. This program was initiated, the Mariachi Master Apprentice Program was initiated in 2001 by the City of San Fernando, spearheaded by Virginia, and also in collaboration with Maestro Nati Natividatcano, founder of Mariachi Los Camperos. The idea was to bring together an already flourishing community of mariachi musicians in the northeast San Fernando Valley, especially those in the programs of San Fernando Middle School and San Fernando High School, to create that community bridge, one of culturally relevant music. Mariachi Tesoro that you see here today is part of the Advanced Ensemble. This group now, this program now consists of beginners, intermediate students, and of course, advanced students. Since 2001, when it was initiated, we've had many collective and also individual accolades, the most important being 2012 National Arts and Humanities Youth Program winner, the highest honor that the country gives to after-school arts programs. And this was bestowed by First Lady Michelle Obama at the White House. And individually, we've had many, many students go on to universities to perform professionally, many of the most prestigious, including MIT and UC Berkeley, UCLA, Stanford. And it really is an honor being here today and representing not only the City of San Fernando, but we were participating, representing the area of Los Angeles in this statewide competition. I'm very proud of, to be here this morning. And again, I want to give a big congratulations to Nuri Martinez, who's always been a supporter of our community in San Fernando, and it's really a treat to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Checo. Thank you, Checo. And I wanted to just reiterate how amazing this woman is. Virginia Didik and I met many, many, many years ago, and she has, not only was she the mastermind behind the Mariachi Apprenticeship Program in the City of San Fernando, she has ensured that the city not only attracts the most amazing mariachi instructors, but also makes sure that the Mariachi Apprenticeship Program turned into Mariachi Tesoro. It's got one of the most amazing talented youth, and if it wasn't for her, this program would not be possible. I just want to say thank you for mentoring so many of our youth that come throughout this, not only the City of San Fernando, but throughout the northeast San Fernando Valley. So thank you very much, Virginia. It's really great to see you and reconnect. And with that, I also wanted to just take a minute to recognize our Coca-Cola scholars that are shadowing, Councilwoman Rodriguez and myself. Tali and Estefany are shadowing us here this morning. I know they're back here. I just wanted to give a big shout out, just because we're talking about young people and youth and your contributions, whether it be through music, arts, or politics, we appreciate the fact that you're involved. So thank you for being here. And with no further ado, we have a little special program for you. Rather than me telling you how amazing and talented these young people are, I want you to hear it for yourself. So let's give them another round of applause to Mariachi Tesoro de San Fernando, as they performed two pieces that won their state title. "El Chihuahualtenco" and "Me Muero Donde Quiera." Welcome to the City of Los Angeles.
Las mujeres y los hombres por su patria dan su vida con valor. Valentina y Jesucita ya pelearon pero nunca morirán. Y la delita morirá peleando lado de su coa. Yo me muero donde quiera. En la raya es la primera, yo me juego el corazón. Yo soy embriada de veras. Si me echan un lazo...
Respondo a balazos.
Si me echan un grito...
En medio los quito.
Allá en las trincheras...
Allá donde quiera.
Me muero de veras por mi pabellón. Las mujeres y los hombres por su patria dan su vida con valor. Valentina y Jesucita ya pelearon pero nunca morirán. Y la delita morirá peleando lado de su coa. Yo me muero donde quiera. En la raya es la primera, yo me juego el corazón. Yo soy embriada de veras. Si me echan un lazo...
Respondo a balazos.
Si me echan un grito...
En medio los quito.
Allá en las trincheras...
Allá donde quiera.
Me muero de veras por mi pabellón.
Eso. Let's hear it one more time for Mariachi Tesoro. Bravo. Well, thank you very much. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles and Council District Six, I'd like to congratulate you on winning the California State Fair Inaugural Youth Mariachi Competition. Congratulations and thank you for representing our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
That was fantastic. Let's give him another round of applause. And for those of you that didn't realize it during the presentation and that special ceremony, the councilwoman was actually singing. I think her mic was, I don't know if it was on or off, but that was fantastic. So thank you so much for that. I'm going to ask Councilmember Sadio to come up into the chair for, in a moment, but actually, let's go ahead and go through the roll call and go through some of the agenda items.
Blumenfeld, Bahn, Buscay, and Sadio Engler-Harris. Weezer, Carrasco, Crain, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Blumenfeld moves. Councilmember Bahn in seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Councilmember Sadio moves and Councilmember Weezer seconds. Next items, please.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, I'd like to ask Councilmember Rue to lead us in the flag salute, if he would.
If you could please stand, put your right hand over your heart, and ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. And colleagues, if we can go ahead and turn our attention to the agenda.
Mr. President, items one through seventeen are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, do we have any specials on those, colleagues? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ice.
Those are approved, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Items eighteen and nineteen are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on consideration on those items now. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ice.
Okay, and I'm assuming we have cards on eighteen and nineteen?
Yes, sir.
We'll hold those on the desk for cards. Next items, please.
Items twenty and twenty-one are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
We will hold those as well, thank you very much.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I'm going to ask Councilmember Sadio to come on up, so I can give a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, it's pretty awesome when we get to recognize local heroes, you know? I know that, you all know, I try to find our diamonds in the community, those heroes that go above and beyond what it means to be civically engaged, what it means to be a citizen of Los Angeles, what it means to be an Angelino. And today, we celebrate not just two, but a family of philanthropic efforts, community members that have come together and went well and above and beyond to help those in need. We all know that today, we are struggling every single day with the worst epidemic of our lifetime in homelessness and people living on the street. Women, families, children, living under freeway overpasses in their vehicles, in the bushes, with little in terms of opportunity and no hope. Well, this started some thirty years ago with Lynn and Duffy Walton. They've been collecting donations and delivering them to the folks on the streets in the community throughout the entire city of Los Angeles. They started their philanthropic efforts while they were involved in the New Basin Blues Running Club, and I want to hear more about that. I'm not sure if they actually sing the blues while they're running, but we'll hear more about that maybe. They would have collected, they would collect members' used shoes, and then they would take them home and wash the shoes, along with clothing and supplies, and redistribute them. When homelessness issues worsened in LA, Duffy and Lynn started the Green Bag Program. Check this out. So they reached out to all of their running community partners, their local individual friends and local businesses, churches, and others. They asked all of them for new or good, clean-conditioned shoes, clothes, blankets, towels, toiletries, food ready to be eaten without cooking and not needing a can opener, that was important to them as well, books, magazines, and often students and children that volunteered drew pictures and wrote personal letters to put in these green bags to deliver to the folks that were living on the street. This couple would take to the streets in their own truck alongside with an army of volunteers, and they would help pass out bags to those in need, in fact, 20,000 bags that they've put together and given out to the community. On top of their own volunteering organization, Lynn also works at a local food bank. Duffy has also developed a regular route to pick up donated foods, breads, fruits, vegetables, canned goods, and then he goes out and delivers them to those in need. Together, the couple has put together the New Basin Blues Cross Country Shoe Program and every single day deliver over 500 pounds of fruits and vegetables. Community members could buy a pair of new running shoes and donate them to local high school students to encourage them to stay active and out of trouble. So every year, the club purchases shoes for over eighty students that otherwise could not afford their own. It's because people like Lynn and Duffy and their daughter, who's here as well, Lori, continually give more to themselves or more of themselves to make other people's lives better. They are part of a great culture in the community in the San Fernando Valley, and I'd like to make this presentation a little more special, so I'd like to ask that we all wish Duffy tomorrow is his 75th birthday. So let's wish him a happy birthday and give them both a round of applause. Now, I'd also like to ask Sandy, the person that nominated the Waltons for this award, to say a few words.
I would have loved to say a few words, but I think you've said everything that I had down to say, so I don't want to go on further. I just want to say I've known this couple for over 25 to 30 years. I'm not sure, time goes by so quickly. And if anybody is interested in helping out with the Waltons or with our New Basin Blues Running Club, it used to be the Basin Blues, and it had to do with running at the Sepulveda Basin. It's not the song. So anyway, here they are. I want to introduce Lynn Walton and Roger Duffy Walton.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this. This is quite an honor, and I want to say that over about forty years of working with homeless people on the street in Los Angeles, on Skid Row, in the San Fernando Valley, and in all the regions in the city, that I have come to believe that one of the most important things that you people in authority and in a position to do things should please pay attention to transitional housing. Permanent housing is wonderful, but to get people into permanent housing... Permanent housing is wonderful, but to get people into permanent housing, you have to teach them how to live and how to come off the street. Transitional housing is a wonderful and effective, a reasonable cost process to deal with it. So please consider that in your, in your thinking and in your, your deals. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I would just like to say that homelessness is a major problem in Los Angeles, and everyone knows that. But it's everyone's problem, and I think everyone has to ask themselves, what is it that I could do to alleviate this problem? Or maybe just make it a little bit better for one person at a time. Thank you very much for this honor.
So our Local Heroes Award goes to Lynn and Duffy. Let's give them another big, huge round of applause, and thank you all so much. Most importantly, thank you to them for what they've done. Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lynn and Duffy. Thank you for your leadership and for showing us the way forward. I understand we have a special announcement from Mr. Carras. Brief, but poignant and significant. Mr. Carras, you're up now. Thank you for your leadership on this very important matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a moment and acknowledge a special guest today. We have representatives from the Ovarian Cancer Circle inspired by Robin Babini. And on Tuesday, September 25th, 2017, one year ago, councilmembers Rodriguez and Martinez helped me to honor this very special organization. And I'd like to point out to Paulinda Babini, who lost her daughter to ovarian cancer, who at sixteen years old was showing symptoms, and her doctors decided that she was too young to possibly have the disease. And by twenty, Robin had left this world. And Paulinda gathered up her heartbreak and started this amazing grassroots organization. So today, I'm wearing my teal tie, and on your desks are teal-colored pins. And starting tonight and for the rest of September, the exterior of City Hall will be lit in this color. Also on your desk are bookmarks with information about the symptoms. Tonight, the iconic pylons at LAX will also glow teal for ovarian, for ovarian cancer awareness. The hope is to create a conversation. It is the Circle's intention to educate the public about the disease, highlighting the often missed, silent symptoms and the importance of being your own healthcare advocate. And we're here to spread the word. Ovarian cancer is one of the deadliest gynecological cancers. In the United States, about 15,000 women a year die of ovarian cancer. For women who are diagnosed, there's a 70% chance of recurrence. Ovarian cancer can happen to any woman at any age. Annual pap smear tests don't detect ovarian cancer. In fact, there's no early detection test, other than a CA-125, which is not always accurate. Therefore, ovarian cancer usually gets diagnosed in the later stages of the disease, which is partly why it has such a high mortality rate. Women who are concerned that they might have symptoms should talk to their doctor about a transvaginal ultrasound exam, although insurance companies may not cover the procedure. So men, talk to the women in your lives, your wives, sisters, aunts, mothers and daughters. And women, don't be afraid to talk to your doctors and ask them about ovarian cancer. And now I'd like to ask Councilmember Rodriguez to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Carras. Colleagues, you know, we had this conversation last year, and I want to thank you, Councilmember Carras, for bringing this forward and to our attention. And to the women for continuing in this fight. It's such an important one, and I think at this critical moment in our country's history, where we continue to be threatened with having the choice and having the opportunity to exercise our choices as women over our bodies. And the threats that are going on right now in this country and the conversation that is happening, it is, there's no better time for us to really engage in advocating for the kinds of gynecological screenings that are going to be the life-saving tests that the women in your lives will receive. So again, I, I urge everyone to continue to be united in this fight for us to assure as women that we continue to provide, have access to the screenings that are really going to make a critical difference in life or death situations. So again, Mr. Carras, thank you so much for, for allowing, inviting us to be a part of this. This is, again, this is, this affects everyone, and we need to be reminded that the kinds of policy decisions that are being made and the kinds of leadership appointments that are being made, potentially to the highest court in the land, put us in greater threat of ever having access to these types of opportunities to have the screenings and the rights to making decisions for our bodies going forward. So again, thank you very much for your advocacy.
Thank you, Mr. Carras. Thank you, members, those of you who wore teal this morning to commemorate and acknowledge the fight against cancer, particularly ovarian cancer, to the ovarian circle. Thank you very much, ladies, for continuing to be here every year to remind us of the importance of early detection. For those of you who do not know, women of color are underdetected. Women of color tend to be the ones who don't necessarily go for checkups, and women of color tend to be the ones who ignore some of the early symptoms of ovarian cancer. We cannot reiterate enough how important it is for early detection for women to listen to their bodies. Listen to what your bodies are telling you every single month. Listen to what your bodies are saying to you. They're asking for you to pay attention. We need to more than ever advocate, as Councilwoman Rodriguez mentioned, we are at a critical, critical time in our country where men in charge are trying to take charge of our bodies when they have not one day spent in the bodies of a woman. So it's important for us to continue to advocate for women's rights, for women's reproductive health, to ensure that we have the rights that this country has given us, that we have fought for, and to ensure that all women, every single woman in this country has access to dignity, health and respect. Thank you very much.
Now I'd like to ask if Paulinda could take a moment and say a few words as well.
Thank you so much for having us here today. I'm Paulinda Babini, president and founder of the Ovarian Cancer Circle inspired by Robin Babini. This is Robin, and my gratitude and appreciation to Councilmember Carras and Martinez and Rodriguez and all of City Hall for your amazing support for lighting teal tonight, City Hall, and also our gratitude for the LA, LAX for lighting the pylons teal as well. We are deeply committed to raising awareness for this disease and funding for early detection tests that does not exist at this time. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, colleagues, and let's do what we can to spread information on, on this deadly disease. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Okay, colleagues, let's go ahead and go to items 20 and 21. Mr. Correia? I'm sorry, on items 20 and 21, if you want to address those?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Both items 20 and 21 have been considered by Budget and Finance. These are settlements that can be approved in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Colleagues, then we'll go ahead and open the roll.
Pardon me, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I may, for item 20, in the case entitled Guadalupe Barragon versus Starline Tours of Hollywood Incorporated, there is a recommendation to expend $475,000 in settlement. For item 21, in the case entitled Renee Pfeiffer versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend $2 million in settlement.
Okay, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those two items. Would you like separate votes, City Attorney? No, okay, on those two items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and jump over to item 18. So let's go ahead and go to item 18 and 19 for multiple, we'll go to the multiple speaker cards. So, Wayne?
Do you have my mic on? Okay. So this is the schools, high school voter registration day. Yes, we support that. I, I like voter fraud. So I think we should definitely enlist kids at least ten, and between the ages of ten and fifteen, we should go ahead and, and get everybody on the voter rolls so that they can continue to vote for all you wonderful Democrats, so you can keep doing the good job you're doing. So I support registering high school voters under eighteen to vote, as if they're eighteen to twenty. Also, what you want to do is create an algorithm to make sure that you change their dates of birth to make it look like they're over the age of eighteen. So again, this is great. We definitely need more voter fraud. We have to increase the voter rolls because nobody gives a shit to vote. So yes, I'm definitely in support of that item. So now we get to number 19. This is a great thing. Thank you to the council president on item 19. We, we need to reestablish decorum in this, in this body. This, this stuff has gone on long enough. The, these disruptors, these, these fiends, these savages are coming in here, especially, especially these people who are black and protest all of these violence and everything. We need a rule where you kick out everybody in the street and nobody says a goddamn word against developers or the rich or the powerful or the Jewish or the nonprofits. We need a new world order, and, and you guys are right on the right track. I support what Donald Trump's doing in Washington, silencing the First Amendment. I don't want the First Amendment. I don't want free speech. I want dictatorship. So let's all sing along. I want a dictator. I want a dictator. I want a dictator.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Herman?
So, so in supporting my position regarding the Unified School District, I used to attend school there and learn how to play instruments myself. I used to play piccolo piet like Jose Weezer did one time ago when I was here. But the subject of concurrence of the mayor, you know, it would have been nice if the mayor could have been here for this presentation instead of fucking going to some motherfucking state and fucking rambling about him becoming the next gay president. But anyways, in 2017, 2018, either legislative body do not support LAUSD voter registration due to the multiple wetback fraud registrations efforts in declaring what I declare amnesty. Fuck you! Because LAUSD has determined that high school voter registration date is only for eighteen and above. Well, I want to vote anyways because I'm disabled, and I think I have a right. Now regarding to item 19, I support item 19 because you're gonna violate all our civil rights and you're gonna take action against the Bill of Rights to suppress us from participation in a building. But technically, the Department of Justice regulates how you interact with the disabled population, and I plan to file a lawsuit on behalf of the public's interest in doing so. Because I want to adopt in favor of item 19 that you restrict us from all buildings, from even the fucking mayor's house and, and that cunt bitch house over there. Yeah, the, 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 the one over there across the street. They call it the federal fucking building. Now you motherfuckers are suppressing us from public speaks. And, and if I had a waffle head like Mr. City Attorney up there with that douchous fucking face, I would be saying the same thing. I am in favor of item 19. Fuck your civil rights and fuck constitutional protection. No.
No, that's it. Thank, please have a seat. Next speaker, please. Please, please have a seat. Um, next speaker? Dwayne, next speaker? Dwayne? Oh, it's Wayne. Wayne, you already spoke. You already spoke. Go ahead and sit down. You're disrupting this meeting. Sit down. You're disrupting the meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. Mateo on item 19? Mateo Nagasi? Okay, no longer here? Okay.
Yeah, um, number 19. There's a cockroach right here. That's the civil disobedience, right? Yes?
What you filled out, sir?
Yeah, the civil disobedience and the general comment. Okay, great. No, I just wanted to come and talk about civil disobedience and its place, especially in this institution. I live here on Athan Spring, and I don't know how many of you live here. Most of the neighborhood council lives outside the city limits, so, you know, I don't think they really understand the level of crisis that we are experiencing here in the city. Homelessness is, you know, a state of emergency. Was that it? Just a month, minute?
Okay, so on 18, we're gonna go ahead and go to that item, colleagues. So on, on 18, we have no more speaker cards on 18, but I believe we have Holly's here to come speak on that. Oh, no, from the center table, please. Thank you.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. Today, September 25th, is National Voter Registration Day. We've partnered with the mayor's office and the Secretary of State. I was out at Polytechnic High School this morning, and it's very exciting to see that we've engaged so many high schools. The goal was to have a voter registration drive at every high school in L.A. Unified School District, and we were successful in doing that, with the goal of increasing the youth, both the registration and the voter turnout. We've had historic low turnout from both the youth and primarily the Hispanic-Latino vote, and our goal was to increase that so that, that the elections reflect the communities that they serve. And I think it's really important that we've so far in this drive statewide had 25,000 youth, increase in youth vote. This year, overall, since the Secretary of State started, it's 200,000, and he would like... and he would like to get it to 500,000 within the next couple of years. But the idea is that if you are 18 years older and a citizen, you are eligible to vote. If you are 16 or 17 years old, you are eligible to pre-register, and that would automatically mean by the time you turn 18, you would be eligible to vote. So, we encourage everybody to register that's eligible. And the deadline for November's election is October 22nd. So, we're going to do everything we can to register as many eligible voters, and encourage them, after they've registered to vote, to vote in subsequent elections. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 18. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Now, we'll go ahead and go and take up item 19 for public comment. Ron, I'm going to call these up, if you want to just come on up. Whoever's at the microphone first would be great. Ron Bitzer, Hamid Khan, Eddie H., Jamie Garcia, John Motter. And if you guys want to start lining up, that would be great, if I call your name.
Ron Bitzer, CD2, former public gadfly.
And your name was, I'm sorry?
Ron Bitzer.
Ron, okay, great.
Mr. President, members. I'm a former public gadfly, termed by KBC News years ago as a quote "outside agitator," end of quote. What's been happening in this chamber is not public free speech. Okay? And it's inevitably leading to other disruptive behavior, which I assume this motion is trying to get at. Now, obviously, if it becomes your new rule of decorum, it will need to be monitored. I mean, my speaker cards in committee meetings have been ignored. It's nothing new. But in July, I suggested to Paul Coretza's office that you might consider another incremental step, which is to have Channel 35 edit out the vulgar and disrespectful language that my grandchildren have to listen to.
Thank you very much. Wayne, there's no applauding the speakers. If you're going to disrupt this meeting, you're going to be asked to leave. You know the rules. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Hamid Khan with the Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. It's really shameful and pathetic that the best option this body is looking at is a legal option, rather than listening to people about how they're going to deny free speech, how they're going to take away political dissent, because we are here to disrupt. Political expression is disruptive. Free speech is disruptive. We are here to disrupt because of the system is violent, because the system is racist. We go to the police commission and disrupt them, because LAPD has the largest number of murders of any police department in this country. And this body is doing zero. So, we are here to disrupt. We, we, we keep on disrupting. And this is nothing new, this whole smoke and mirror about three or four gadflies? Well, that is only smoke and mirror, because this has been going back for a long time. Mitch Englander, you operate in such a way when we go to Public Safety Committee, that you lump everything up, every item up front. Is that a violation of our right? We can't even wait till the, till the, the item comes on for, for, to speak, but you require people to speak up front before even listening to what the cops have to say,
Thank you very much. The next speaker, please. Your time is up, sir. Thank you very much. Sir, you're going to be disrupting this meeting if you continue. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Herb, there's no clapping, guys. We're going to roll right in and start the clock, so if you, if, I'm just letting you know, if you start applauding, speakers are booing. What's going to happen is that you're taking up their time, so...
That's unfair. How are you going to penalize, how are you going to penalize a speak for something someone else does? But anyway, my name is Eddie H. La Can. Somewhere I read of the freedom of speech. Somewhere I read of the speedam of, freedom of assembly. Somewhere I read that supposedly, in this great country, that our right is to protest for right. Silence is the language of defeat. And I'll say that we would not be silenced, and we would not be defeated, but we would be steadfast, unmovable, and unwavering in our efforts to abolish this unjust system. My dear brother Malcolm X once said, "If you don't stand for something, you will fall for anything." So, we're here today saying both unapologetically and without equivocation, that we will continue to fight in everything, in every way possible. We have come here today to say that this ordinance, this issue, is uncivilized, and it needs to be abolished. For we would not be silenced, but our voices would be heard, because it's all about power to the people.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. We're going to start the clock on the next speaker. Go ahead and start the clock on the next speaker. The next speaker clock has started. Come on up. You're going to keep taking their time.
John Motter with Ground Game LA. So, now we're policing applause. This is fucking absurd. I didn't see the sign go on when the band was playing earlier. Like, when were we allowed to clap then? Civic engagement in the city is pathetic. Every single one of y'all got elected with, like, some of the lowest voter turnout in the city. This is considered a well-attended meeting in a city of 4 million people, and y'all are looking for further ways to limit people from attending meetings, and restrict free speech. I know the Constitution doesn't mean much to y'all, but I took an oath once, protect and defend it, and we have a right to free speech, and to petition our government for aggressive grievances. So, yeah, we're going to keep clapping, we're going to keep talking, and we're going to keep disrupting, because this is fucking bullshit. And you can have my, my five seconds.
Your name again? Your name again? Okay.
My name is Jamie Garcia with the Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. So, the people of Los Angeles come to spaces such as City Hall, the Los Angeles Police Commission, and countless other public advocacy spaces to be heard. It is often that we are not heard, and this is evidence in policies and ordinances that are passed in the city that don't reflect the needs of the community, where criminalization of the poor and those experiencing homelessness come before city officials move to house and provide resources, where countless federal grants that fund the racist and corrupt LAPD get continually passed through the Public Safety Committee with complete disregard for the impact of these programs or the wishes of the community. We saw this in the fight against the drones. This is our, this space is ours to air our grievances. This space is for us to come and to push you, to hear us, and to move you where we tell you to move. We are the community, this is our space. If you attempt to control this space and criminalize us, our presence, our speeches, obviously, you're attempting to silence the community. The city, state, and national representatives and officials throughout history have been moved through countless tactics, such as disruption.
Thank you very much.
If this ordinance passed, and...
Thank you. Okay, go ahead and start the clock on the next speaker. We're starting the clock on the next speaker. You're, you're, you're taking up, you're taking up the time on the next speaker. You're taking up the time on the next speaker. So, next speaker, come on up.
Pertaining to free speech and the city attorney sitting there.
Okay, we're going to ask the group, stop the clock.
Absolutely, under the color of authority.
Sir, I didn't call you up yet. Stop the clock. Restart the clock. Hold on a second. If, if, unless you guys sit down, we're going to escort you guys out, because you're disrupting the meeting. This is the, you're complaining about the public not having the opportunity to speak, and yet you're taking the public's time up to speak. So, you, so if you guys are not going to allow it, then we'll, okay, then we'll have to ask you to leave if you're going to disrupt the meeting. So, I'm asking you all to keep it down. You can remain standing if you'd like, but if you're going to disrupt the meeting, you're going to be asked to leave. That's the last, sir. That's the last comment I'm making on this. Please don't disrupt their time now. Now it's their time. It's your time. Sir, if you could please state your name for the record.
Oh, Craig Jones. And I am truly satisfied with the disruption of the meeting. There is a lot of kids in the community up and down this, this block that's called King Boulevard. Mr. Curran Price, I reproach your office about Nature's Hotline. There is an entity within your district that's providing viable services. They are in dire straits of your funding. And the other city council, Mr. Harris Dawson, I spoke to they pertaining to Nature's Hotline. This is an entity that deals with little children, and it's very viable. And what it does is that it allows them to grow. We're talking about to attack the social environment, to bring something new. My idea, Mr. Curran Price, in the eighth and, and the, the ninth and the eighth district, is to clean bus stops and the opportunities for kids to be elevated, to grow our children. Political protest is a reasonable thing when you see great injustice in the disenfranchisement of our constituency all up and down King Boulevard. There is an entity that's called Nature Hotline, Nature Soul Food. Those people need some money.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, Gina Viola, Audrey, Rob Quan, Jed Perrott? Can all come on up. JoJo Smith? Peter Pallock?
Gina Viola, democracies are rowdy by nature. We debate freely and disagree forcefully. It's part of what distinguishes us from authoritarian societies where dissent is forbidden. But we're held together by deep bonds of affection, as Abraham Lincoln said, and the shared belief that out of the fractious melting pot comes a unified whole that's stronger than the sum of our parts. You began this meeting with a stern warning to the audience about applause. Yet just moments later, we all had great cause to applaud the young mariachi band. All voices have merit and should be heard, even your paid plants meant to discredit this process, all of us. You were elected by us and should be listening.
Good morning, ma'am. Please state your name for the record.
Audrey George. I'm here to express my opposition to this rules change to a rule that shouldn't be existing in the first place. First, they came for those who spoke beyond their two minutes, and I did not speak out because I'd kept my comments brief. Then they came for those who used profanity, and I did not speak out, because I had repressed my anger about the harm caused by policies they enact. Then they came for those who interrupted them from the audience, and I did not speak out because I had prioritized decorum over outrage. Then they came for community members who abandoned civil discourse in outrage and frustration about the lack of accountability, and I did not speak out because I could see from your faces that you'd already dismissed us. Then they came for those who, with the audacity to directly address comments and questions to people on the dais, and I did not speak out because I seen the futility of appealing to uncaring and disrespectful members of the Board or Council. Then they came for me, because I believe speaking out for the dignity and humanity of communities being harmed is a right, and not a privilege.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi there, Jed Perrott. So, just as you all are criminalizing the unhoused across the city, just as you all criminalize entire communities across this city, you are effectively here trying to criminalize dissent, trying to criminalize free speech. And, and I don't know how, I mean, you're talking about disruption. You're talking about disruption here. Y'all are disrupting democracy across this city. Y'all are really working for white property owners' bids. That's who you're working for. No, this is our city. You cannot shut up the voice of the people. You will not shut the voice of people. This is our city. This is our time. All power to the people, always.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I haven't even came to the mic yet, so start my time over.
We'll start your time over, and if you could please state your name for the record.
Well, you got to start my time over first.
We're doing that right now.
So, JoJo Smith with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. You know, today, you, you put this rules of decorum up. We have rights as a First Amendment. So, you trying to silence us? We will not be silenced. We will not be silenced.
Excuse me, sir, you got to speak to the, you got to speak? You're disrupting the meeting.
We will not be silenced.
You're disrupting the meeting.
We will not be silenced.
Thank you.
We will not be silenced.
There's no yelling, it's disrupting.
We will not be silenced.
Thank you very much.
Because you know what? We have a First Amendment right. You cannot tell me to stop talking, because I have a right to speak.
Have interpreter, so you can't yell into the microphone.
You sit there with that mic, and y'all talk all y'all want. I will not be silenced. Today, we will be speaking on, talking the truth, because y'all cannot silence us.
So, we can shut your microphone off, but you can continue talking. If you're going to yell.
I have a voice.
If you're going to yell, we have...
My voice is louder than mine.
There you go, that's fine. You can use your voice.
I can speak as loud as I want.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker, please. If you yell into the mic, we do have interpreters that are wearing headphones, and it just, it's very disruptive, and it hurts the ear. So, we'll cut your sound, but you can continue to talk. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
This is Peter Pallock. Is the mic on? Peter Pallock? It's a blatant, blatant closure of everybody's voices that are not your own. We recognize that the most efficient thing would be for none of us to speak, to make us all silent at all times. We're standing against that.
Rob Quan?
Hey, thank you.
I may not like the way, the way some people act in here, but I'm going to defend their right to do it. This council is really after the content of speech at hand. We're giving lip service to our rights and given a bullet point page that doesn't cite a single leg to stand on. This is part of a pattern. Similarly, this council passed a protest ordinance last year banning a number of items, and effectively limiting the size of signs people could get their message out at a protest. LAPD's eyeball measurements are the standard for ejection. I've never seen this ordinance enforced at a protest with politicians participating. But when we protested Senator Feinstein over her inaction on DACA, an elderly man was injected for having a flag on a wooden pole. An American Indian Movement flag, a Families Belong Together sign, were all next to Mayor Garcetti at a rally, all next to Councilmember Bonham, he was arrested. But just a week later, those signs were ejected because we were protesting Jim McDonald. What are you doing?
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, all you wonderful people. My name is Jacinto Ryan Jr., and I am the founder, executive director of a nonprofit program called Nature's Hotline. We teach the children there is no greater wealth than my life in good health and the love and respect that I feel for myself. I appreciate Mayor Eric Garcetti giving me 40 years of community service to help the children get their life together. There's no better life, in my, in my opinion, than the children are our best hope for a better world. And I thank everybody for being here and listening to what this older guy has to say. We love everybody in this room. We love everybody in this country, and we got to teach self-love to our children, because our children are our best hope for a better world.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
What was your name again, sir?
Jacinto Ryan Jr.
God, thank you so much.
Founder of Nature's Hotline. God bless you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Reka, again? Uh, yes. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Janie Burns, and I worked with Jacinto Ryan for 25 years in the community. To, this book is full of letters from children thanking our program.
Did you have a, excuse me for one second. Stopper clock. Did you have a, did you fill out the speaker?
Yes, sir, I did.
I didn't, your name's not on the, on the board for, for this item?
It's on Janie Burns for general speak, yes.
Oh, we, we're not on general public comment. We're on item 19.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. No, thank you very much.
My apologies.
Okay, we'll call you up when we go to general public comment.
Could you start the clock for me? Thank you. Reka Adalanan-Dem for the ACLU of Southern California. The proposed changes to Rule 7 exacerbate the already existing constitutional problems with the city's rules of decorum, and further threatens the free speech, free public debate. As the ACLU explained in its detailed letter opposing this motion, the city council's existing definition of a disruption already penalizes conduct that may be protected expressive activity. The rules of decorum broadly prohibit and designate as disruptive conduct such as individually addressing any member by name, waving, clapping, or abusive language. Actions like clapping, heckling, booing, and harsh questioning may annoy city council members and even some members of the public, but that is expressive conduct that is protected under the First Amendment. It cannot be punished unless and until there is an intentional and substantial disruption of the city council's business. The existing rules of city coun, of decorum, the ACLU opposes this motion.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, is going to be Mr. Hunt, followed by Tiffany Guerrero, Steve Diaz.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Gonzalez, and I did fill out a speaker card. And I just wanted to talk about item 19, and how, as a young person, and as a young person that's from LA County, I really think that this is really disrespectful, not just to the young people and the youth across the county, that, you know, I come here, something like right now, you know, missing school, because I believe in the import, in the importance of working together collectively, and really having to speak out against issues that are affecting our community. And yes, we might clap, or yes, we might do something that you guys might find annoying, or that you guys might find as civil dis, or as, you know, disobeying your rules, or whatever, but that doesn't mean that you have the right to silence us, because, because of us and the people that you see back there, the county has in some way changed, and has been able to change a lot of laws, or has been able to, you know, move forward with getting, you know, young people out of lockup. And that wasn't because it came from you guys, but it was because it came from the community. that wasn't because it came from you guys, but it was because it came from the community pushing hard to make that happen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. The real chief, Hunt. But I'm, I'm in presence of one of the original outlaws, Mr. Zuma Dog. Hooty hoot! We came down here and rocked the place. For all you guys don't know, and I was in the courtroom, Dowd versus the City of Los Angeles, Dowd and Dog, the Dog, right here. Hey, we smoked you guys. Steven Rhodey smoked you guys. Vote no this. Listen here. If not, hey, my bag needs some, you know, some more green stamps in it. I'm good at that, but if you guys wanna know anything about this, call Dean Pragerson and ask me because I made the city quit, and I will continue to make them quit. Dowd versus Dog and the original Venice Outlaws here with me, we are the outlaws. We only missing Matt Dowd. Good luck in New Zealand, but the original outlaws are here. Thank you.
And Mr. Dog, you got a card in as well. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Zuma Dog, and I'm here to let the city council know on record I won a ruling regarding First Amendment free speech, public comment here against you, Pragerson ruling, and this is a direct violation, I'm here to say. Cannot have prior restraint. So if you do decide to pass this, I just had to come down today to let you know I'll be filing for declaratory relief. I can barely say it, but I could type it and turn it into the judge. He won't be happy. So I'm urging you, in an abundance of caution, to not get sued. Think how pissed he's gonna be if you do this. Now, one thing I wanna say is that everything I talk about is about from the podium. No disruptions from here, the audience. So I would be willing to craft a motion that would allow for enforcement of what you would like from over here without affecting here, and I need to tell you, I warned you for years, settle or you're gonna have a gutter talk thing that you can't control. So it's here, so you're gonna have to deal with it otherwise.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Steve Diaz, and I am with LA Can. I'm here to oppose item 19. As written, it attempts to cast a wide net over people's const... over people's constitutional rights in the name of addressing a few people who have gone above and beyond to insult this council. The facilitation of this agenda item clearly highlights why rules that... excuse me. The facilitation of this agenda item clearly highlights why we cannot have rules that are left up to interpretation. The CLA's report also only talks about making the case for this item and does not do any analysis around potential impacts to other public comment processes or people's ability to partake in the public process.
Tiffany Guerra. I'm here to reject any motion that would ban folks from a meeting or from attending future meetings based on if they are deemed to be disruptive by you all. I am also demanding that city council members reject this as well. I've attended numerous council meetings and commission meetings, and what always strikes me is how many hurdles folks have to pass through to even get to this spot to be able to make a comment, and then when we get here in front of you, we are limited to 60 seconds or 120 seconds. That's inhumane, it's unreasonable, and it's cruel. Folks sometimes have to travel for over an hour to get here, sometimes two hours, take time off work, find someone to watch their kids, or bring their kids with them, navigate physical, emotional, and psychological barriers. Then as folks are standing here, speaking publicly to you about issues and policies that have deeply impacted their lives, you wanna be able to judge if that person is being adequately respectful and civil? Well, fuck no! We do not stand for this. We reject this motion. I reject any motion that bans folks for disruption. You all should be disrupted. Disrupt the status quo. Disrupt this space.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ariana Alcatraz, Gilbert Salcedo, Megan Choi, Nick Napolitano, Adeline, Patricia Mendoza, and Lupita Carbio.
Good morning. I'm Gilbert Salcedo, co-president of the National Lawyers Guild here in LA. I am, as a civil rights attorney, well outraged that this body is even considering this measure. It infringes on the First Amendment right to freedom of expression and freedom of assembly and grievance and presenting grievances to the government. The whole purpose of having public comment at an agency meeting like the Police Commission and like this meeting is for the public to express their opinion. If their opinion bothers somebody in the, a public official or they find it offensive, then so be it, but they don't have a right to shut them down. This measure would give public officials another tool to shut down dissent, to shut down opinions that are not welcomed or not, or impractical or inconvenient. And if that's a... The whole purpose of this, of having public comment is to have the people express their opinions, then if they're gonna, if you're gonna do this, might as well shut down all the meetings and just have them under closed doors, and, and that'll be it. If you wanna fix the problem of interruptions is, you need to put a measure that would allow...
Thank you very much. The next speaker, please. Thank you very much. As an attorney, you should, you know the rules too, so now you're taking up the time of the next speakers if you continue. Thank you. Next speaker, please. And can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Akele. I'm here with the Black Community Clergy and Labor Alliance, and I have a letter we'd like to share with you all. So who do I give it to? We are here to oppose... The Black Community Clergy and Labor Alliance and Black Lives Matters LA is here to oppose Rule Number 7, in part because in a pluralistic society, there are many voices and they need to be heard, but our history indicates to us that when you pass restrictive rules, black people and people of color suffer first. And we have that experience across the street, where Dr. Melina Abdullah and myself and others have been arrested for raising our voice and challenging the conditions that exist there. We are asking you to do the exact opposite. We're asking you to find ways to make it more participatory, ways to make more voices heard, not to restrict and demean and eliminate. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Megan Choi. I'm a board member of the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. I'm here to oppose the proposed ban today. Clearly, members of the community are concerned about its impact and also its implementation. Given a clear historic pattern around who in our society is permitted to be disruptive, there is cause for concern in marginalized communities that this precedent will be carried out here as well. A punitive tool will suffocate what little civic engagement is available to Angelinos. Given the political climate and our current crisis, we have watched the expansion of authoritarian restrictions in countless sectors. Please do not choose to be a part of this tradition, and as council member, Rhea will know, neighborhood councils don't have this privilege, so I don't think it's democratic. Thank you.
The next speaker, please.
Drive away for their time to...
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Adeline Bertha. I work for Social Model Recovery Systems, and I'm here to voice my concerns around the committee's motion to exclude members of the public due to disruptions. This motion restricts community right to be, to have a public voice. This city, state, and nation have grown on the backs of community leaders and members speaking up whether they are acceptable to the norm or not. Creating something that regulates the community voice is unsettling. I urge you not to support anything that discovers, discourages civic participation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Nick Napolitano, and I think we should respect our constitutional rights, First Amendment in specific. We do have the free speech. We're headed for a police state is what's happening. I don't know if, well, I'm sure you're all aware of it. We're headed for a police state where we have no voice or, or anything. Today, here are some of the higher-ups. The DHS is forming, well, they have Fusion Centers, and out of the Fusion Center, what they're doing are police state gang stalking. It was just real similar to the KGB, the DSC.
Can you please speak to this item specifically?
I'm sorry?
Speak to this item specifically.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right. The Fusion Centers, under the guidance of DHS, have adopted these DSC techniques at KGB, where they gang stalk, they're using electronic harassment. A lot of people are doing this. This is similar to the China Embassy and the Cuban Embassy.
The next speaker, please.
Good morning, city councils and the public. In item number 19...
Your name first, please.
Patricia, and last name is Mendoza. Gil Sodilla, if I can please have your attention, my city council, with all due respect. I was born on Tempo and Bowdrie Street. Since 1983, I've been working for a law office. I've done slumlord buildings. I've done many beautiful cases, and my attorneys, that I've done freelance for more than 25 years, five stars, more than 30 years criminals, they tell the city attorneys how to prepare their lawsuits. I'm gonna give my opinion with all due respect in item 19. Because of me, and because of these people, and because this land belonged to Mexico, you guys all have a job, and you need to be reminded that you guys are getting a salary because of us, and you're gonna be getting a good pension and feeding your families. And with all due respect, you need to be reminded, sir, and everyone else, these people can turn around, go outside, and get all the petitions from Home Lives, and clean up City Hall, and remove you guys all. It's called freedom of speech.
Thank you very much.
It's their rights, and that's why they pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And is Lupita still here? No, no longer here? Okay.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ariana Alcatraz. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network. I have been a part of various different movements throughout the city of Los Angeles, as well as people sitting on the council today that have roots in activism. Many of us have been involved in movements that would not have achieved progress if it wasn't for protests and if it wasn't for disruption. You never know who's gonna be sitting at this table in the future or at this council who was, who might be trying to pass some trash policy that we will, that will be required to have disruption, that will be required to protest. You cannot set this precedent. You cannot, you cannot stop us from speaking out, and you cannot stop us from protesting. There are many policies that go through this body every month, which requires protest, which requires us to be here and speak out against it. Many of you are rooted in that kind of activism, and so please keep with your roots, and please do not pass this motion.
Yeah. Thank you. Stephanie Garcia? Stephanie Garcia? Not here. Okay, that was the final speaker. Still? Are you here? Okay. And you're the final speaker on this. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Garcia, and this is unexpected for me. I actually just came to shadow a council member because I'm here to promote women in public service, but I found myself engaged in this item. I was hearing both sides of the story, and I feel like I can really understand both, but I couldn't help but to speak out, and I couldn't stay silent. I can understand that there are several people who even said racial slurs up here and were very disrespectful, but you, that invalidates the comments of the people who take this personally and seriously. People here are disrupting these meetings because these policies directly threaten their lives. You can't tell people how to react when they're being oppressed. Their lives are in the line, the lives of their future generations are in the line. And I know it's difficult to understand from a different perspective, but there's definitely a disconnect here between the community and the council members, and I think that, as a community member, a youth, I ask council members to please reevaluate this policy and try to find a middle ground for both people. Thank you.
And ma'am, which council member are you shadowing today?
I'm actually shadowing Rodriguez.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much.
Oh, Martinez, sorry.
Thanks for being here. Martinez, okay.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, that concludes the public comment on this. We're gonna go ahead and close the public comment on this. We're gonna go ahead and go into closed session. So, folks, if you wanna go, go ahead and go outside, we're gonna go ahead and go in closed session. Sergeants, if you can go ahead and secure council chambers for closed session. If there's any media here, please grab your...
...happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
...happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
... Incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most. ... Of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most. ...
Incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
...incident happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
...that happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
...
...of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most. ...that happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Knowing when you need it most.
...of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
... ...happens close to my home.
Or near my school.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
All right, we're returning to open session. Go ahead and open the doors. Okay, we are back in open session. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and jump into general public comment. Mr. Herman, come on up for general public comment for one minute.
I'm the fucking legislative body of this council and I will run the show the way...
Sergeant, can you move the center chairs?
Yeah, move those fucking chairs right now. Move the motherfuckers over. No, I just started, mister... And the reason why I started because, once again, you cunts can't cunt me out of a building. Stop this fucking retaliation and discrimination based on the DOJ and stop putting motherfucking barriers against the homeless, against the disabled, and more so against... Jackasses like that that don't have an actual bar license. And that stupid, fat, bald motherfuckers wife, Ms. Rios. If you vote for her to become the next councilwoman in CD14, that cunt is gonna fuck up your community the same way the city attorney, Mike Fuer, has fucked up this item 19 and motion 50 from last week to this week. Fuck you, 42 USC, 1983.
Uh, Zuma Dog, come on up. One minute.
First of all, Casey, I ran out of time. I wasn't gonna say anything, but you remember this old lady I went to one time to Van Nuys? There's only been one lady that I came out of her female anatomy that I didn't go into. She went to go visit Bill Rosendahl last week. She liked him so much, she says she's gonna stay. Now, I want you to know that I am not... I try to talk to these people about use of the C-word if nothing else. You can't win any type of argument when you lose all support, okay? And so, I'm very frustrated because I fought for this because you wouldn't let me say things like council member's name like Alarcon when he was under indictment and you were giving him money, or about an issue that I was on topic because Dion was too dumb to realize it. You know what I mean? Those are real things. I wasn't fighting for the use of the F-word or the C-word. So, what does LA Times do? They run an article about people using the F-word and the C-word. They run my picture when that is not my issue. So, I just want you to know, I did wanna craft something that would allow for enforcement from over here without affecting it here. Otherwise, I will be in the way with a declaratory relief. Thank you very much.
Wayne from Encino, then Janie Burns, Jacinta Ryan. Mr. Spindler. Chop chop.
Yes, again, it's been a very good day. Let's keep eroding the First Amendment. Also, I think one minute's too much time. Let's lower the time to 45 seconds per item because I just think two minutes... A minute is really a waste of time. You can make it 45 seconds. You should amend the rule. A friendly amendment, I'm sure Mr. Sadiya will sign that. And I'm sure these great people over here right now that aren't paying attention to goddamn things being said, and you need to pay attention to that. So, again, I'm supportive of the item. I think you should've passed it today. I think it's very well crafted. I love Sharon So's legal brief. I'm sure as a law graduate, Mr. Price clearly appreciates it. And just keep up the good work and let's keep changing these rules because I like the way this meeting is. It's very family-friendly. Thank you so much.
Patricia Mendoza? Yes.
Good afternoon, city councils and city attorneys and president. The last time I was here, it was Friday, August 31. I was here to make a comment regarding the apartment buildings are being built just behind my property to speak to my city council. But Mr. President Herb Weson was very rude, treated me like a piece of trash. I felt like he treated me like an animal, violated my rights. And it's really sad because all of you guys sat here, whoever was present, even the public, no one came out to my defense. I went back home and I wanted to cry because I am human, Gil Sadiya, and I deal with a lot of things in my community. There's a lot of story for me to tell, but I realized that the devil doesn't want me here because evil doesn't like good. I would appreciate it, and I don't understand how in the hell you can put someone that's a very drama person, toxic, is a bully. He's not running here a gang member, private gang here. And I wonder where you guys went to law school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further public comment, that concludes general public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, any objections?
The desk is clear.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues?
Mr. President, the meeting of the health, education, and neighborhood council meetings will be held at 1:30.
Thank you. Mr. Sadiya, you have an announcement?
This weekend is the fifth annual Latin Jazz Music Festival in Sycamore Grove Park. It will be very special. It's the fifth annual. We have, I think, 14 bands, many Grammy winners, and it's gonna be running Saturday and Sunday. Sunday will be all women's bands or all women-led bands. On Sunday, it'll be about seven bands on Sunday and about seven on Saturday. So, everybody's invited. It's free, open to the public. You wanna have a great time, you wanna have the best time of your life ever, come this weekend.
Cool.
Sycamore Grove Park in Highland Park on North Figaro.
Thank you. Before we get other announcements, Mr. City Attorney, Straff, you have an announcement?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that pursuant to Council Rule 77, Agenda Item 19 is laid over one week unless there's an intervening council action between now and then.
Thank you. Further announcements, colleagues? Ms. Rodriguez?
ITGS committee will be meeting at 1:30 this afternoon.
Thank you. Any other announcements? All right, let's all rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Price?
President, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Sharon Blackburn. Sharon Renee Blackburn was born on April 7, 1949, and she attended UCLA where she studied sociology. She had a love for sports, music, and movies. Her favorite pastime was capturing those special moments on camera. She had a passion for empowering marginalized youth and adults in the South Central community. She was a substance abuse counselor for the city of Compton in the 80s and 90s, and among her many efforts, her community efforts, she served on the board of the Zabata King Neighborhood Council here in CD9. She had a strong presence throughout the community from her work with the South Central Prevention Coalition to her advocating for our seniors at neighboring senior living facilities. My office worked with her on countless efforts, including community cleanups and supporting our youth. Sharon leaves behind to cherish her memory Diane Powell, her sister, and a host of friends and well wishers. Sharon will truly be missed, not from just constituents of the ninth, but from all of South LA where she worked so hard. Her viewing will be on Thursday, the 27th, at Angeles Funeral Homes at 2:00. The service on Friday, September 28th, at Fame at 11:00. There is a GoFundMe for Sharon Blackburn Memorial, and that can be sent to Ari Powell, 2632 Kimona Avenue in Los Angeles. May she rest in peace. We will cherish the memory and legacy of Sharon Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, colleagues.